You know, real property.
We've got extra jurisdictional property on one side that we can't control in any way. So it would have to be within the existing channel right of way. And the engineers will tell you when you start meandering, that creates hydrology and it's like jetting out. And if you jet out under the road, now you've kind of, it works in places where you can have a stream meander naturally and move like along the park. If it moves and takes out some parking, great, it fills in somewhere else.
But if you did it in a channel that has to be straight, it's kind of a problem.
Well, I think the good point that you made though is that if you're thinking about extending the surface of the roadway or creating a decked bike path that's sort of nice for people. If you really want to solve the problem with a lot of water, you might have to look at options of going under the roadway for the channel, the certain portion of the channel. Whereas the covered deck portion on the side could be a little meandering. The channel itself does not necessarily have to conform if you're willing to look at going under the roadway. And I think that has to be considered as an option if the channel is going to be too small for potential capacity.
We have another resident, what resident wants to say something?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Calvin Herrick. I live at 639 Marsh Road. Pretty much right in the middle of where this project's being proposed. And I agree with some of the comments that it's a channel in existence now. I don't see allowing the natural restoration of habitat. And I'm glad the council is looking at issues upstream and downstream of this project because what happens upstream is going to affect downstream. During the past year, the most recent storm, I had approximately eight inches of standing water in my garage as a result of water coming over the small rock wall that currently exists there now. And it's going to continue to be a problem. Traffic issues on Marsh Road are also significant. It's a major roadway for police, fire, sheriff, and ambulance emergencies. Widening the roadway, I mean, I would propose widening the roadway to the point of still keeping it to just two lanes, one lane each direction. But within that widening to try to better manage the water runoff that currently occurs as well as trying to mitigate some of the major rains and overflow that might happen also. Because of the traffic with the emergency vehicles, there currently is really no turnoff space to allow traffic to pass, allow the emergency vehicles to pass by simply widening the road a little bit to create areas of turnout or bicycle pedestrian pathways on both sides potentially. While I would like to see an open type of creek there, I understand that widening the roadway would probably require a covered culvert as some of the considering options are. So I want to commend this council for having that as a consideration as part of the project because we do have to take in consideration the lives and impact of traffic, the lives of the people in the area. And that is a roadway that's going to need some future addressing to better manage what's there. With the people now utilizing bicycles and options as a greater extent, that's why I think widening it to reconstruct the roads to allow for that. The other consideration that I have too is I have a disabled daughter who has special needs, attends a special needs program. She does not wander out in traffic, so that's to her credit. You know, but traffic is a major issue on there too. You know, so the consideration of what needs to be done with improving the water drainage and water management of this channel. I'm glad to see this council is taking into consideration the various factors that are also going to affect the community and traffic on that there too.
Thank you. Okay. Any other member of the public at this point want to make a comment?
I just say that, you know, there are neighbors of his that have sandbags in their driveway. So it's not, it's a more, it's not just him that's got the problem.
Well, along that entire length from Millisfield Road, Atherton, further up to, which is the unincorporated area of Menlo Park, virtually everybody has sandbags out along the front. Fortunately, my house foundation was a raised foundation, so my house did not flood. But two houses next to me, both directions sustained flooding because they're a concrete slab. And as I said, my garage is at the back of my property. It's a concrete slab with a two and a half inch rise, but I still had eight inches of standing water in my garage. And that was a large shower and large overflow that occurred from that range. But it looked like you could almost surf down Marsh Road that big.
So shall we continue?
Sure. One of the other additional cons that's not noted here is that it does permanently put in ties or nails into the roadway cross-section. And if there is future desire to do a bypass, as was discussed with staff, this would basically create issues with it. They are put in at an angle and that could be, but there'll be a hindrance to that. And that was 2.1, approximately 2.1 million. So based on the March discussion, we were told to look at reviewing some closed options for the channel. And we looked at two options. One was cast-in-place concrete culvert. So basically that could be a pre-cast culvert or a cast-in-place culvert. We looked at specifically a single cell cast-in-place alternative. Cost of that was approximately 2.9 million dollars. Cross-section would look similar to this.
So is that the same volume? It looks like it's enlarged the volume, although you've taken a little wedge off of the right-hand side.
All of the alternatives increased the capacity in the channel. This one slightly increases regular conveyance. It decreases, as it starts to go up and starts to overflow, it starts to expand in plane. It doesn't take into account that overflow capacity of the channel.
Yeah, well, the way you have it there is we could have some holes drilled on the side if it would come off over the back of the tree. Because that's a trough down there.
So how do you increase our section when it's going into Menlo Park's covered section? Don't you get like a little, with a smaller capacity, don't you get backwash?
Aren't we creating a problem downstream?
With this option?
Yeah. With all, if you said that you're increasing the volume in all options, that doesn't make sense to me.
No, we're increasing, we're increasing the conveyance volume, not the volume.
So if it's absolutely full and it's trying to wedge into Menlo Park's section, it would overflow in our section?
Yeah, we would have to overflow out. And, but, but the input to this should be about the same.
It should.
So the input will be the same. And so you would expect that the volume would expand just in that 300-foot section.
And does this also?
Eighteen hundred foot.
Eighteen hundred.
Okay, because there's not going to be drains down there. So if you only have, let's say, a volume of 100 square feet of feet, okay? When it's in that section, it's not going to expand. It's going to be about the same. I mean, there could be some more protection. But you could put, from here, from here you could have, if you wanted to have overflow sections, especially down in Menlo Park side where you'd have little exit valves where the water could pop out. And we could even produce, you could even produce a, you know, a swale. Yeah, you could produce a swale here that would also channel it down.
Yeah, and, or you could actually put some drains at the top, drainage units that could allow.
Yeah, well, that way it wouldn't interrupt with, I mean, putting, putting something up at the top if we were doing it. I mean, we realize we're not going to reengineer it because we're not the qualified people to do that.
Why?
But if you put something here, then if somebody was either walking or riding a bike down here, they have a, if they're not paying attention, they could actually get injured. It'd be better to do the exit over here.
And we didn't look at the hydraulics for that because there's a rate, there's also a rate at which that has to happen for it, for it to work.
How much expected pressure increase would you see here?
Well, based on what, what Bill?
Bill.
Yeah. Based on what Bill was saying, he's, he's looking at not increasing pressure. He's, he's basically creating, he wants to create relief.
No, I understand what he's saying. My question is, if you don't do anything for relief, realistically, how much additional pressure would you expect?
We didn't take a look at that from a hydraulic standpoint.
Why would that be?
So out of curiosity, we'd down to the Menlo Park area. So this design also does increase volume, correct?
It's a, it's potentially a slight increase in volume.
So with increasing volume, you're going to increase speed during high, high flow periods, even if there is overflow. So you're going to have a higher volume and a higher speed going downstream. So I think the mayor's comment, trying to figure out the square going into a round hole.
Yeah.
What's it going to do to our partners downstream?
It's going to impact them.
We're going to have a failure at the connection. We're going to have a failure at the connection.
Right, but we don't want to create a problem downstream.
Madam Mayor, let me go back. Again, this, when the, when the study was done and when the additional work was requested, the focus is on the repair of the channel wall. They do have a hydraulics sub-con consultant, but they only looked at what the impacts would be for, you know, as part of the repair. All of these kinds of issues could be looked at, certainly. We'd have to engage probably an engineer with a specialty in hydraulics as well as maybe, you know, and for anything on the surface, we'd probably also want to have a traffic engineer to look at whether you were putting a pathway, a walkway, a roadway, et cetera. The other thing is on the part that's showing the tree right now, I think that may vary in height so that there may be some locations adjacent to our residents on that side where the, the earth may be higher than the channel, in which case the water might be directed out. But again, those, those, those kinds of issues are, were beyond the scope of the structural engineer's analysis. But we certainly, we'll, you know, if, whatever option council chose and whatever additional issues, we would have those analyzed as part of the design.
And again, basically to, to.
I want to know how much additional water can they handle downstream? They may have plenty of capacity downstream.
We, I don't, I don't think they'd know that. They're, they're much smaller.
Well, we've gone down, down that channel. I know it's a, we send a maintenance crew down there to clean out the brush and the.
Our channel.
Right. And we go down there, but we go down to where the connection is. So how big is the connection?
You know, I think the, I cannot tell you the size of that, but part of the reason that the channel has overtopped as recently as last December is that I believe it's the capacity once it starts going into Menlo Park that creates that sort of backwater effect so that the water overflow. So based on that, I'm guessing that the capacity, if we were to increase the cross-section of the existing channel, that it would still have the same effect once it got to that portion of the box culvert downstream. And so as you, as you point out, Councilmember Weber, there would still need to be some method of relief of the hydraulic pressure. And I, you know, can't calculate either volume or pressure there, but that would be part of the analysis if the council chose to have a cover input on. Because they'd have to know that as part of the design process.
So we have some members of the public that want to speak. Valerie?
Yes, I think that just, I mean, I don't know what prompted this study session. And I know that the channel has been issued for many years and it has the damage. But I just want to point out that Marsh Road and Willow are basically how maybe, what, 80% of the population during the day of this peninsula is how people access us. And this is not something that will be solved with a short-term fix. We really need to think about this. And I think we need to engage our partner, Menlo Park, in this. And I think we also could get support from Facebook because this is a major artery. This is like cutting off like a major limb if we don't do it right. And because we know we have increases in population and traffic and we need to do this right, there's a whole section of wooded, grassy, or leafy rooted area that's not even usable by bikers or runners, that's just sort of vacant on one side that might be brought in with the road kind of moving. We have to look at the capacity, not simply how are we going to push more water into Menlo Park, but to absorb more of that water and allow more bad to be lessened as the water is continuing on its path. I don't think we really want to increase our channel or just cover it and push it out. I, I think we have to have a better long-term solution and maybe bring in more parties into this.
Diane?
Yes, Diane Sandu. In part of your study or your repair, are you dredging deeper than where you are now? No.
Again, what, what we're doing is cat X, it's a repair. We have to replace in kind to keep it from expanding beyond the scope of the environmental clearance, right? So once you start looking at, and that, that was the thing, once, and we kind of identified that, once you start looking at this kind of system, you're changing air and noise, you're changing hydraulics, you're changing vegetation and habitat. So you're, you're engaging other factors. And it won't just be Menlo Park that you'll, you'll be affecting. It's, it's also Caltrans because there's a Caltrans facility downstream that also floods. And so the hydraulics is going to have to also consider what's going to happen at 101.
So before we get into a lot of discussion, let's just let him finish the last one. Let me just make a point that in March, they had given us the other alternatives. Option four was a request by council to do two things. Do a pipe, which we're going to get to.
My pipe.
Councilmember Dobby wanted a pipe, just lower it in there and there we go. And then covered it. I honestly don't remember this concrete cover thing, you know. So I want to move on from this because I think this is.
No, was that a pipe or a box culvert?
Oh, gosh, I did, okay. I was just thinking. So can we go to the pipe?
Yes.
Can I just finish my comment and then move on?
One thing I was going to recommend is why aren't we using the same process you do for homeowners since 2002? We have dissipation wells, where there's underground dissipation wells and water goes down in and dissipates out 20 feet down.
That's not what he's using.
I, I'm suggesting that that might be something in the future.
Oh, that they use the detention trench.
If they're going to dredge or if they're digging deeper, they can go down.
So can we do the steel pipe?
Yes.
Let's get to Councilmember Weber's.
So steel pipe, construction of series of, not one, but a series of steel pipes.
Well, I was, I was disappointed that there wasn't just one. Were you excited that there were four and not one?
I thought they were going to use a bigger one and maybe reveal.
I did too, you know?
Steel pipe seemed so simple to me. That would cost 2.76 million.
Well, I'll explain that a little further.
I'd like to contract this whole thing to Mr. Dobby. Dobby construction. Look, and you could probably put a third pipe on top of it and not have to go underneath. I mean, what are you guys doing?
Well, this is shown at a deeper section of the channel. The, the lowest section of the channel is only five feet deep. Okay? And those are five-foot diameter pipes. So.
That's a pretty big pipe.
No, it's only joking.
No, 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 I, I, there's an explanation, so.
Well, I'm ready. I want to hear it.
So we do have a, we do, we did, we did do a cross-section at the lower section with a single pipe. And I can show that to you.
Was it in the back way then? I didn't read all the way back.
That's what it would look like with a single pipe to convey the same.
That's what Dobby was looking for. That's exactly what he wants. You could ride a skateboard.
Would it fit into Menlo Park's hole?
So that would be, that would be the area, that would be the area required to convey the same.
No, 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 that was good. This is being taped, you know. This is a family.
It changes the hydraulics. Basically, you'll have standing water in the, in the pipe if you do that, right? It has to stay at the same inverted elevation.
Okay.
Okay? And then, because it's a, it's a square function with regards to the size, as you reduce, if that's an eight-foot, eight and a half-foot diameter pipe, it becomes six and a half foot, two six and a half foot diameters which still sticks up above that. It becomes three, six-foot diameter and four or five-foot. And so.
Well, let's keep going.
That was basically the reason why it had to, it had to go to four. And the reason, the reason that it's so expensive is that now you're excavating quite a bit of, of the roadway to accommodate for the two additional pipes that are not in the channel. And then, as you get to the end, the last several hundred feet has to come into a transition structure that has to transition from those four pipes back into a culvert. So basically, at the beginning and at the end of the channel, for several hundred feet, you're, you're, you're building a concrete transition structure to transition the pipes into a single structure. You can't get away from the transition structures. So that's the reason why this, this, this is a little bit more expensive. Now, the one thing with the closed systems, they are, they are, they are a little bit more expensive than the open systems. But they also have built into that cost, you don't have the additional cost of having to cover it again, right? So there is some cost savings in the future to accommodate that if you desire.
And this alternative, because you're digging under the street, is no longer categorically exempt under CECL, so you'd need a full-blown PR?
No, I think that's still.
Not necessarily need a hair, a full-blown study. Categorically exempt, so now you have to do an initial study and at least a mitigating negative declaration is a probability.
Again, there's, there's several things that would probably trigger something other, a little bit more. The road, because you're increasing the roadway width, you've got storm, stormwater runoff. You've got, now, if you use that for traffic, you've got noise and air quality. Because you're changing the hydraulics, you're affecting other communities with the change hydraulics. That'll, that'll trigger some, some, some further CECL if somebody wants to challenge it. It's basically, if you have somebody that will challenge your, your environmental document, your, the level of the environmental document needs to be raised.
If you use this system, you could just fill it in with dirt above it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what we're showing. We're just covering, we're just covering in.
So that would save some money.
Where?
What?
Why?
For the future, for the future accommodation of the, of the.
Oh, in the future when you make a roadway.
When you restripe it.
All the dirt you take out of the roadway, you could use to cover it.
Yeah, okay.
You'd have to save on fill.
You'd have to import garb.
Okay.
But there's garb out there for sale.
With the concrete, with the concrete one you showed before, could you also just cover that with dirt?
Well, it would be, the, the cover would be the concrete. It would be, it would be basically that section. And then the relief system here would be a little bit more difficult than the box, right? Try, trying to come up with a system that allowed, if you want to do what Bill was indicating previously.
Like an overflow valve.
Yeah.
Your overflow would probably have to be in those.
Transition structures.
At the junctions, yeah.
Yeah, the transition structure. So that.
Wow, that could be like Niagara.
We, we, we might keep those open, open transition structures, right?
All faithful, all faithful.
All faithful, okay.
It's not going to go down anywhere. There's nowhere to go.
All faithful, that's a good point.
Roy, in addition to that.
Orcs is where you're going.
For the one with the multiple pipes, in the design, which is not your part, but in the design, you'd have to deal with the section that's already been repaired that has the soil nails.
We'd still have to do that. Yeah, we, we, basically, if we're going to cover this, Eric, cover this, that basically will repair that, that issue. At the, at the areas of the transition structures, because we're putting in new junction structures, that will, that will resolve the issues of the repairs. But it, it becomes less about a repair project and more about, you know, expansion of the street. So.
Thank you.
And that one came out to about 2.7 million. So here are the, here are the costs for the individual, the individual options and potential duration of construction. And then with that, we, we as, we as a, the project leaders basically selected option three, which was a soil nail wall, partly because of the ease of construction, the minimal impacts to the creek and to the, to the vegetation that's there and to the traffic handling. It, it is the, probably the more, one of the more difficult ones to accommodate in the future. So it does address the repair well. It doesn't address as well the, the future because, especially if you plan to put a bypass and an additional cover of the, of the, I think it hinders that a little bit.
But you can cover it, right?
Yes.
You can cover it. It's just a little bit more challenging because of the soil.
And that would be extra cost.
All of that would be extra cost.
To cover, could cover any of them, it's extra cost.
Probably like a million except for three and four.
So.
Or four, four A and four B.
Yeah, so four, four A and four B, they're more expensive, but they already also include the cost of the covering.
Covering would probably be.
Equivalent, right?
Yeah.
I like the, now I've switched from the pipe to the box culvert.
And then the staff also wanted to include option two A, the cast-in-place U-channel, which has very similar costs. It does have a little bit more traffic handling issues. It does have some issues with the vegetation and construction ease. But it will not hinder the potential for putting a bypass in the street in the future. And it's, it's a little simpler in putting another, another cover on that section. So staff is recommending option three.
And that's the same cost as three?
Yes, just a little.
Pretty much.
It just has a little bit more.
Six thousand dollars more.
But as far as the tieback retention on the wall on two A, correction, three, isn't that to create more stability for the wall towards the roadway?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a fairly good system. But it has, you know, part of the problem is it's putting permanent, it's putting a permanent nail through your, through your street section. And it hinders utility. If you ever want to come back and do utility replacements and things like that, there's always something you have to, you'll have to be aware of them.
So how long are those tiebacks?
They're generally 40 to 45 feet long, depending on the number you're using and the height of the walls that you're, you know. Typically, typically each wall has a six-foot tributary area, the first one is a six-foot square tributary area.
So that would ask, do we know already if we have utilities that potentially 40 feet of impact in that roadway, which would disqualify this right now or no?
Recall that the tiebacks were used for the repair.
Yeah, there, there, we do know that there are some utilities. We've not done the detailed analysis of how deep they are. I believe the soil nails could be installed without adversely affecting any of the existing utilities.
The closest utility is a gas line, which is a little bit, it's, it's on the other side of the center line of the street, based on our, based on our initial review. So we're potentially going to miss, we're potentially going to be several feet underneath that.
Billy gets a good word.
So, so do you, it's just a sure target.
Well, it'll be possible.
Just when you do these tiebacks, 40 feet in, do you have a choice in the direction, can you go downward in that words? Instead of going outward, can we go downward?
It is. It has a 35-degree slope. So it's, as it's getting further into the cross-section, it's, it's actually going deeper.
So we currently have nail, soil nails in there now. How many do we have? And if we do any of the pre-cast concrete channel, you know, what happens with those?
This is, this is what it looks like, the nails.
Yeah, right. So do we have, what, 20 of them, 200 of them or, you know?
I think it was a 200-foot long section that was repaired, so every six feet.
Every, so it's six feet diagonally, one way, other, and you're doing it?
Yeah, it's two layers of six feet, six feet staggered.
Rough numbers, 60, 60 to 70 of them.
Yeah, yeah. So those would remain?
Oh, yeah.
No, I think, oh, if you did the soil nail, those would remain.
No, but if we did the pre-cast.
I think you answered that, but could you refresh this?
We would, it does.
Yeah, if we, if we do the soil nail, we'd be basically replicating or reproducing what's being done here. And so there will be more nails in that similar orientation. For the cast-in-place option, those nails become, we, we basically be cutting those nails when we're doing the cast-in-place options. So they would be, they would be abandoned in place, but if you were coming back in the future with a project, if you hit them, they wouldn't have any repercussions to the wall.
On the cast-in-place.
Yeah, on the cast-in-place. If you hit them, if you hit them in the, in the soil nail option, you have to come back in and repair those nails, which is expensive. which is expensive.
What was the impact to the trees for the pipe solutions? We didn't talk about that.
Um, the, the impacts to the tree side, you mean with regards to placing the pipes?
Placing the pipes, because I think Atherton would be, look very unfavorably at something that would hurt the trees along the roadway, so I think we need to know that as a issue.
I, I think all of the options have, with the exception of the precast, have some minimal requirements to clear the canopies in the areas where cranes are going to be required. And most of the options have a shoring system. So with a shoring system, there's always going to be some crane or some type of thing that will be required to place the shoring. On the precast, because they're carrying and picking these things up, there's a lot more of the canopy that has to be cut to accommodate that. So that would probably have the biggest impacts to the trees. I think even the culvert has shoring, it's just a little farther away, so less, maybe a little less, less, little less canopy has to be cut for that.
Would the box culvert or precast?
They can do precast or steel for the, for the culvert. Oh, oh, you're talking about the box culvert?
Yeah.
It can be precast, they're just, you have the issue with the joints, more frequent joints.
Precast would affect the trees.
No, precast would have more.
No, precast has more.
If they're cast in place, then they're just going to bring it.
Well, I said the base would be.
Gas impact to the trees.
But, so with the precast U-channel, that is very disruptive.
Yeah, because you have to, if you recall, you have to pick up, these, these, this U-shaped structure?
Yeah.
Imagine a ten-foot-long.
Yeah.
U-section, they basically have to pick that up and drop it in, and so.
Cast in place is, you get a big dump truck, a cement truck, and you pour it in.
You pump, yeah, you pump, you pump the, you pump the.
At least in time.
Madam Mayor? Okay.
But see, they, they all have that green section, which requires some kind of cranes or impacts.
Okay, we have, Larry?
Yes, I have two questions. As I noticed, your cost estimates are to the nearest thousand dollars. I wonder what your error bars on that might be? And also, which of the options have the greatest uncertainty in cost on your mind? I mean, the, the danger here is you're going to pick one and go out for bids on that and maybe find out it's way more expensive than you expected. And you should have picked another option, which you could actually afford. So that's, that's one question. The other question is, would it, you know, I'm worried, I, I, we, we back up on the creek, so I'm worried about when you say there's a chance that it might collapse, then that starts worrying me. So I would say, you know, would it be possible to start on, on the two recommended options and then get that done? But then, kind of in parallel, start looking at what it would cost, additional cost at a later time to add the possible pedestrian bicycle cover.
So to, to address, to address the, the questions directly, I, I think, you know, these are all, these are subject to bid, so we, we tried to pick the least proprietary methodologies that are out there. These are all fairly common. The, the one that probably has the greatest unknown is the precast, because it'll depend on how, there's very few precasters out there. And depends on how busy they are with regards to their bid. And so the cast-in-place concrete and the, and the soil nail are probably the most common types of construction out there, and they're utilized by a lot of companies. And so the, the way to get your bids, the way to get the construction cost down is to get a lot of competitive bidding to a project. And so, and depending on the environment, the construction environment at that, at that time. And so, you know, there's always, there's always question marks as to whether, you know, engineers' estimates come in below or low. We've been pretty good, plus or minus ten percent.
Okay. So Larry, I just want to comment on your concern about your property that backs up to the, what we're, what we're calling the, I don't know, south wall? It's not the Marsh Road wall.
South wall.
That wall is not the one that we're concerned about falling in. It's the Marsh Road wall.
No, I understand, except if there is a collapse and it backs up the channel.
Oh. Oh, yeah. Well, you'd have some flooding in your backyard.
Well, hopefully they, they could rectify the problem before, before it floods.
Before, before the rains start.
There was another question that Larry had, Madam Mayor. The second part, could maybe Gordon could address in terms of an additive alternate for a bidding process for the cover.
Yeah, I think, I, I think what Larry was saying was, could, you know, could you move ahead, assuming the council gives direction tonight, you know, not direction, but gives a sense, we'll, we'll come back with a recommendation for doing the design work? And could you do that in parallel with considering the other options, doing the environmental work, et cetera? You certainly can, but it's likely to raise the cost of the overall project by about twenty percent. If you, if you go in knowing what you want to do and you start with that, you can get, you know, that, that's where your least cost would be. If you make changes along the way, that's how the contractors get to buy their cabin cruisers and, you know, things like that.
I guess I was really looking at it as two separate projects.
Sure, and, and even separating them would be more expensive. I would point out, as I did in, in my opening remarks, we do inspection of that, of both walls, both the one along your property as well as the retaining wall from Marsh Road, every year, and would, would make repairs. So, you know, the, I, I didn't want to alarm the council, but I didn't want you to lose sight of the fact of why you contracted for this work initially, which is, they said, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. That doesn't mean next week, that doesn't mean next month. But if this were ignored for, you know, as long as all your terms are, you know, maybe, that, that might not be a good thing. So, you know, it's something.
It's increased risk.
We have to move forward with the council's direction, so that you, once you make a decision, then we get the environmental work, the design work, and then you can decide what to do.
We have another, Reg, I think you, and then Rick.
Yeah, I just, listening here, I, I just wonder whether we should, whether you have or whether you should sit down with Menlo Park and see if they have any concerns from the point that we connect to them down? Because if they're thinking of doing something also, at least, you know, at least be advised that something's happened. Could you hate to do all this work and then find out they're doing something a bit different?
Hopefully not going to pay for it.
We, we had talked about that.
Okay, we're, we're in, if I may, Madam Mayor, we're in conversation with the Public Works Department in Menlo Park on drainage issues.
Yeah.
More, more often than once a year, so. And, and we're going to be involving them as we go forward with the drainage master plan, which the councils authorize us to do. I've also made it clear to my colleagues in all surrounding jurisdictions that we want to work with them to understand their concerns, both upstream, as they impact us, as well as downstream, as we might potentially impact them.
Okay.
Yeah, so for me, there's sort of three variables that I'm really focused on. There's cost, there's how much disruption there is to the trees, and there's the.